I'm Richard Petry. I'm a friend of Travis. We attend church. Generally speaking, I think you and I have kind of created a little buddy relationship on certain issues and we kind of hit each other on one liners once in a while. I think that was the biggest thing. I think we kind of, I kind of hit off with you and I was like, you know, this guy's quippy. He's quick.
Right. I enjoy his sarcasm.
And that was kind of the biggest thing that I think we kind of connected with at first, but yeah, attend church. And what was it? So originally you came and asked me about, hey, Rich, I got all these extra yard signs. Want to put in, you know, put around town. Would you want to take one? I'm like, well, you know, taking somebody's yard sign is one thing because then all your neighbors know who you're going to vote for. It's kind of okay, really going to endorse you. But at the same, a big E word.
You put me through the wringer. You were like, well, before I can.
I know.
Sign, I need to talk to you.
Yeah, which really is, it turned into this. And then I think you accidentally used the word live when you were, oh, you want to go live? Like actually not just ask me questions like over the phone or something, but.
I had this lingo of are we meeting live versus doing zoom or on the phone?
And now it's official.
And you took it like you were doing Facebook Live.
Yeah, yeah. I was like, oh, this guy's promoting it.
The downside of texting versus talking on the phone.
I didn't get your innuendo. So I think that was the biggest thing. And then this is how it started. So Travis McConnell, I think you're the man of the hour. So we're really just kind of unpeeling the onion here. I think that's kind of the big.
For those of you who don't know, I'm running for county commissioner. That's what this is all about. But you're probably looking at this on my website.
Yep.
So you probably know that already.
So, and I think for, for this purpose and really what was driving this for, so just like the frequently asked questions that Travis probably gets, that I think people are going to see his name, going to see his face. And I was like, hey, who's this guy? All over the town. And, and by the way, I'm seeing you all the way as far as Syracuse on 13, some of these huge banners and billboards you got. I've seen a couple all over, but you're going for middle district. You're not even going up that far north, right?
Well, this is an interesting point because actually, yes, I live in the middle district. The middle district really only matters for the commissioner themselves. I mean, kind of the voter, but not really. The only thing the districts do is they provide diversity of location for the members of the commissioner board. That all three of them are supposed to represent the entire county. All three of them are elected by the entire county. And that's why we've got people all from Syracuse, all the way down to Silver Lake, from out in Mentone, all the way over to Pierceville.
So you're going to be getting Syracuse votes. You're going to be getting, you know, south of the county votes of, you know, everything. I would say, what are your Packerton Road and Packerton people and everything from South Whitley almost, you know?
I've knocked on doors in all those communities and I've got people that tell me they're voting for me. So we're hoping to get their votes.
Okay. So you're heading out signs everywhere, man. So that was the biggest thing. I think we just wanted to formalize a little bit of what we talked about. Just to kind of air out those questions. And most people I don't think get an idea of the gravity of, you know, local, you know, politics, local government. And.
Like the middle district thing. I mean, so it matters for me because I have to live in that district to run there. But for the voter, you vote for all three. So a lot of people, it's kind of a confusing thing. There's a district and normally a district means one thing. In this case, it means something else.
So, and with that, do you specifically have to see business that's only in that middle district? Or you're just going to be hearing business from all over the county as well?
You hear business from all over the county. You are in charge of the entire county.
Okay.
So.
Okay, interesting.
They just want to make sure that all three people don't come from the same place.
Oh, okay.
That way, all three commissioners can't come from Warsaw.
Yeah, all three guys live on the same block in it in a green and, you know, they're all commenting in each other's gardens. So there he goes. But I, I think that's the, I think that's the feel of it. Like where is the representation coming from and how does it fit? So, all right, man. So the biggest thing is the commissioner is a job, but generally a lot of people want to know, are you qualified? And I think that was the other thing of it. So we know that you have a practice here. You're working in Warsaw as a lawyer. And as a barrister, I think it was the official term.
If we, if we were in England.
Yes.
I would give the barrister.
The barrister profession.
I go, I go to court. I'm not a transactional type of person.
Okay, good deal. No, that's fine. And I know that you're working on cases and you have people that you're representing now and you're working with them as well. So you're not, you're not going to stop that practice, I assume. So you're going to keep on it?
No, basically the commissioner position is a full time, excuse me, a part-time job on top of my full-time job at my law office. So I may have to scale back some of the other community things that I do. And this will be my big community thing, serving the county as a commissioner versus doing all the different other community things that I've done in the past. But as far as being able to keep my practice going, plus I've got an amazing staff that do a great work. I couldn't do anything if it wasn't for my team.
Yeah.
Not nearly as much as I do. Same thing with my campaign and everything else that I do. This teamwork's essential. So yeah, the, it'll be basically doing both.
Wow. Well, I, I feel it's, I feel it's cool that really you're, you have a stake in the game. That you're not just simply running for office and that's all you're going to be doing a hundred percent of your time in a taxpayer-funded lifestyle over here, you know? All out of K County, you know? And I think that's the other thing about it is that we see politics as a big scale thing in our country. And we kind of think, oh, these guys are professional politicians. They got no stake in the game. They, you know, they're really just there for the public image and to, to put their party's agenda forward. And I think that's the, that's the side of it that I think is lost a little bit. When people see national politics and they forget to scale back and see, hey, local government is people with real, you know, business in this local community, trying to also make themselves, you know, fruitful in all the things they do.
I think part of the problem is here, even on a local level, we've had a lot of the same people for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
And that's part of why I'm running is to get some new voices in there.
Well, you know, I think it's refreshing and a lot of people know that. And it's like, hey, who's this new guy? And you were saying a little bit about your, your connection with wanting to be in government. And I remember reading in Infree that you had some, some past in that. So I don't know. So where was your original interest in being in government? Well, how did that kind of come about?
When I was back in high school, we used to joke that I'd run for president in 2020.
Oh, that's dirty.
I missed the mark by a little bit from president to commissioner.
Well, you got time. Apparently everybody in the candidacy right now is in the mid seventies.
Yeah. I actually did politics for a little while in school. I started out pre-med and then decided that I didn't want to take science classes for eight years. And switched to a poly sci major. I used to work for the state Republican Party, actually.
Okay.
Worked for the state GOP and helped get, you know, different people elected, things like that back in college when I was younger. Since then, I'm one of the guys that kind of subscribes to, you know, I didn't leave the Republican Party. They kind of left me. And now I'm running with a D at the end of my name, but.
Yeah. Was that doom, deceit, devil destruction?
Democrat.
Democrat, man. Here it goes.
Depending on who you talk to, some of those words would apply though.
I know, I know. I want to remove that a little bit because I think that's the under, that's the difference as well. I think people forget that, yes, we have some really outlandish characters that hold some of those really, you know, moniker titles.
On a local level, politics doesn't really matter much.
No, of course. It matters to us.
Our party politics are so defined by issues that are done at a national level that the local politicians really have no control over.
Yeah.
My entire platform is, you know, economic development based and making Casiosco better for all of us.
Yeah. And I kind of talked to you before that some of my personal experience was working in, as a contractor in economic development for workforce development. And I, I talked to you a little bit about how there are some real human needs in especially this county. As I, as I worked here and I did business services and I did other things as well. And I was kind of looking at all the different organizations that whether they're philanthropic or they're simply just a service organization or some level of assistance to education or just businesses. And it's really this, there's all these small startups in Casiosco County where they're trying to network and they're trying to branch out. And I find that economic development is, is kind of like, people want it to happen, but the same people have been meeting over and over and over. And some of those social service agencies, the new faces don't come in through all the time or, you know, economic development agencies or economic development people don't really change that much. But I think, I think what's great is that you see an opportunity to voice a vision for the future. So tell us a little bit about that. What was, what was on your mind for developing the economy of Casiosco County?
So my main platform ideas are to, one, create a county park department. We don't have one. There's a lot of counties around us that do. And by not having a park department, we lose out on matching grants that our cities and other parks could qualify for, but for the fact that we don't have a county park department. I think that we could make one without spending a lot of money by using our resources that we already have. We've got lots of lakes and streams. My idea is to put a blue way on the Tippi River. You don't have to build it. It's already there. You're going to have to have an employee. So there is going to be a cost, but that cost would potentially be offset by, you know, the attractiveness of the town, economic development around that asset. You could potentially get a business to run some sort of kayak or canoe rental alongside of it. And it is another pull to get additional talent to move to our community, keep our community growing.
Well, a parks department is something we see a lot of times in possibly big cities. But I think, I always think of more of the moniker like Parks and Rec as like the television show. And I was like, all right, we're not hiring an Amy Fuller here, you know? It's like, it's not going to happen like that, but it would be hilarious.
Fun though.
It would be hilarious. Like a Ron Swanson, you know, kind of character, you know, whole libertarian, you know, offset.
There are some smaller counties around us that have it. Noble County has a, has one, La Grange County, Elkhart County.
All right. And a parks department necessarily, I mean, we have state assets. We have Indiana state parks. I mean, Tri County is a state area. I'm thinking of some of the other, but lakes themselves, I don't know. I can't really identify. You would actually have to develop parks is what you're trying to say.
Basically, you'd have to put some access points along the river, which we already have multiple. There's the Chinworth Bridge just south of Warsaw. That has a little park that's already there with an access point there, which is just south of my house. For those of you that were wondering, that's where the middle district is.
We're going to find you.
There's also an access point with the DNR boat launch down towards, closer to Mentone.
Yeah, okay. I know where that one is. Yeah.
And then, so those two points are already there. You could potentially put a couple of other access points along that river.
Okay.
As you open it up. So.
Okay.
My other ideas are to work with cabs, which is the Casiosco area bus service to improve public transportation or transportation throughout our county. It's actually run through Cardinal, so it's not so much public. It's privately run through Cardinal services.
Sometimes more efficient. You never know.
So if we work with Cardinal to make a couple of dedicated routes through Warsaw with potentially some spokes going out into that smaller communities and help get people to work, it does lots of things because it can cost as much as $20 each way to get a ride to work if you don't have reliable transportation.
Yeah, I can understand that, you know, taxi services or we don't, I don't know if we have a thriving Uber workforce over here, but I mean, I imagine it exists. And it's not cheap.
Every once in a while you'll see an Uber, but not too often. But there, we have several taxi services and it can cost as much as 20 bucks each way. So if we had that reliable transportation through cabs and helped partner with them to make that stronger, then it frees up that money, $40, you know, a day and to be able to spend in our local economy, helps get people to work on time reliably, which is great for.
And they can depend on it, you know? It's going to be running on time.
Ultimately, it helps those people move up the economic ladder, which makes our community stronger. So we're only as strong as our, you know, weakest link is the old cliche, right?
Yeah.
It's definitely true. We're all in this together. We're all a community.
Yeah.
And the stronger all of us are, the stronger all of us are.
Well, cool. And, and one thing too, is as I was looking about the commissioner role, it said a lot about, you know, you're going to be into zoning. You're going to be into looking at property designations and things like that, that kind of run into this other level of where housing is an issue in Warsaw. And, you know, Tomer has talked about that a lot. He's always identified areas of, you know, rental properties that could go up. And I know they're even developing hotels and they've done that. And, you know, we're really working on the ability of getting people to have places to stay. But there is only so much we could do to develop that unless, you know, an organization or company wants to build, you know, another large apartment complex somewhere. Or rentals become more available or more housing becomes available or more subdivisions are built or all this other stuff kind of continues to go with it. But Warsaw, how many, what's our population as a town is small? We're like 70, 80,000 in the county?
It's around 80,000 in the whole county. Warsaw itself is, I think, 15 to 20.
Okay. So.
If you include the outer lying area.
Yeah.
Just in Wayne Township, right around Warsaw, Wayne on the Lake and some of the subdivisions, it's about half the population for the county, not quite.
Okay. And again, we're, we're really depending on a couple of things here. We're really depending on people want to be attracted to the area. So they want to live here and a place to live, place to play, place to do stuff, place to get around. So even if they're going to take, you know, middle, mid-level jobs or mid-level service jobs in some respect, that they can afford an area to trans, you know, get transportation. And the idea is possibly in the, the range of saying, all right, now what is, you know, what is the economic development looking like? And maybe, I don't know if you're part of KEDCO and you're working with them or what's going on there?
Well, we definitely need to work with our partners. KEDCO is underneath the umbrella of the commissioner's office. So we would need to work with Allen CEO. We need to work with our chambers, Rob Parker, Renee Sawyer, after Wawa Sea and then the Greater Casiosco Chamber. We need to work with our businesses to engage them. There's all sorts of assets that we already have here. And you mentioned as far as what it looks like, we have a housing shortage. You mentioned that. Our governmental leaders need to.
I'm not the one running, you know? I'm setting you up, man.
To do what they can. That said, like the government doesn't go around building houses, but we can reach out to developers, get them to encourage them to do development, like you mentioned, Mayor Tomer's been doing.
Yeah.
With different projects around Warsaw. We could also do that on a county level. There's been in the past, a county survey that decided, you know, which parts of the county are more suited for development versus others.
Yeah.
Not sure if they still use that or not, but there's, there's other areas that we could even do development out in the county with, for example, the regional sewer districts that we have.
Okay.
Where there'd be sewer districts that could be tied on to potentially in developing those if we work with development.
Well, I, I think even then, if you get into working with just your ability of development into these areas is going to be a real kind of a draw as long as things are still available. I mean, we're, we're kind of relying on a lot of things. We have this orthopedic industry. We're, we're hoping in a, in a some sense that everything continues to only grow. And these companies continue to flourish and they continue to want to bring business here. And there's a lot to it. Oh, grabbing the pillow, man. So, but no, that was the thing that I was kind of thinking about. And I was like, hey, there's a lot to depend on, you know? It's like, it might look really weird, you know? Economy turns, stuff may get a little bit dodgy as far as the businesses go. What is hard times look like? Kind of an idea. Like what would be, what would a hard commission role look like for you?
I mean, hard times, we don't have to look that far. We just look back to March when, you know, the shutdown happened, COVID happened. There was 20% unemployment. We went from two to three percent unemployment to 20% in the span of a few days to, you know, over a month. That was a rough time.
And that was easy to track. You just check down employment numbers and you just look at economic development. Yeah.
Yeah. Now we've gotten a lot of those jobs back already. Our unemployment is still higher than it was before. So there's been businesses that have shut down, a lot of them in the restaurant industry that just weren't able to make it.
Yeah.
So we need to work to get those jobs back.
Some businesses, yeah.
So, and then we need to work to, you know, diversify our economy. Our orthopedic partners are doing a great job and they continue to be strategic and grow. We need to make sure and take care of them, but also get some new businesses to potentially move into our community. We've got the RV industry just around the corner. They've got IT development going into Fort Wayne. We should try and get some of those companies to potentially consider Warsaw. I mean, they're, they're right here next door. Maybe they could grow here.
And we do have some large commercial properties that are vacant right now. And that's another thing that's going to be really kind of in the works of seeing what happens there. And maybe Rob Parker will probably have some answers. And he, I mean, he develops a lot of that stuff in here. But I mean, I was just thinking even then countywide though, there's still assets. There's still available property and space. So.
Yeah. So I mean, the city of Warsaw has a tech park. There's tech parks up towards Syracuse. The odd part about the Syracuse one is it's actually in Elkhart County instead of Casiosco County. But there's things that can be done to try and get more development to continue growing our county. We're one of only like six or seven counties in the whole state that's actually growing. And we need to make sure we keep it that way.
So, and jumping into the realm of it, so I know typically you get into the idea that you said you wanted to do some positive development. You wanted to spend some money on transportation, spend some money on the parks department, spend some money on potential development. As far as municipality goes. One thing goes into play, are we able to afford that? Like a lot of people, are we fiscally sound? Are you, are you going to just, you know, blow the budget right there? Right, Travis?
Obviously this year.
You got to vote on it.
Obviously, things are a little different this year with COVID and we'll have to look at, you know, the budget this year. But basically for the last several years up until COVID, the county's been running a surplus. And instead of spending the money, they've just been basically hoarding it.
Hard times now we're preparing.
It's true, but even now that we have hard times here, if global pandemic doesn't count as a rainy day, I'm not quite sure what does. And now that that rainy day is here, we're cutting budgets instead of using the rainy day fund. So they continue to cut budgets and just keep their money as opposed to spending it. And there's lots and lots of money that they're sitting on. So my, my point would be, you know, they're not going to give the money back. And if they're not going to give the money back, they should spend it on something that would benefit the taxpayer.
Okay. Well, I, I think when we're looking at taxpayer benefits, we're, you know, we're, we're kind of looking at really just seeing it hands on. We want to see it in the roads. We want to see it. And, and there's plenty of potholes to, to fix and there's plenty of curbs to redo and sidewalks to make and all this other stuff. Some of those projects have been stunted, I think, in some of that respect. So, but we're, we're not, I, I don't think we're in terrible shape.
No, but when it comes to road funding, part of that problem is working with our state representatives to get some of the money back that the state's been taking more and more. So part of that money comes from the wheel tax here locally, which all stays here for roads. But then a large part of it comes from the gas tax and from the state, which is run through INDOT, which is the Department of Transportation for Indiana. And it used to be a formula where basically it was a 50 50 split between the state and locals. And it's gradually changed over the years to almost a 70 30 split with INDOT keeping more of the money. The problem is there's not a lot of projects going around here in Casiosco that you don't see. We will hopefully at some point see a US 30, you know, development that's already been talked about. But basically a lot of that money's been spent around Indianapolis. And so it's taking money away from the local jurisdictions, including the cities and the counties that could have been used here and put more strain on our local budgets to try and make up for that or more strain on our roads because they don't have the money to fix everything. There's also some regulations potentially that could be freed up to be able to build more roads. And so, yeah.
Well, these are all talks you're going to have.
And then, and then other nuts and bolts. I mean, we can talk about, we need additional deputies in our county to be able to respond better to some of our criminal complaints and other issues. Some of the response times in our rural areas are a little bit long. And the sheriff's department could potentially use a few more deputies to try and lower those responses.
Okay. So that's, that's a big difference as far as I think your, your talking point, because I think maybe nationally we hear a little bit of, you know, tweets about, you know, little Tweedle tweets about people talking about the police and their funding and their issues. But you're an advocate for expanding. You're an advocate, at least in some respect, to bodies, people. We want, you know, people in the field. We want training. We want.
Yeah, I fully support our place. I'm actually on the sheriff merit board. And while I was on there, we were able to, you know, argue for an increase in the pension plan for the deputies. And I actually had to go in front of the council and had to get up and speak a little bit to make sure that it was approved for the funding for the increase in the pension plan. But yeah, it's been, I, I definitely don't support defunding and eliminating police. I think that, you know, it's important to work with organizations that may be better suited for certain tasks. You don't necessarily need enough police officer to respond to every single call. And I think we expect too much of our police sometimes. And so that part of the defund the police movement as far as working with social workers, psychologists, things like that, that makes sense to me. And I think that makes sense to most law enforcement that they're expected to do too much.
And I, I think it's interesting though, that, you know, again, we have a lot of dynamic problems possibly in the law enforcement community. And the social realm of it is kind of on the response of saying, you know, how, how does dispatch, you know, in a sense, again, distribute who can help, when they can help as the public needs it? And we've had a lot of, you know, you know, memorable cases in the county and people are like, well, we could definitely use a situation here or a situation there that would have been different. Or they could have said, that was the best scenario possible, or that was, that officer handled this perfectly. That was the best, best method of doing it. I think we can see examples in the officers and the people that are public servants that have done above and beyond. And I think at the same time, we could say, okay, well, we know that situations change with each individual account. You as a lawyer, you know, kind of, you know, each individual case is different. Nothing's the same. You're not going to.
I have a magic eight ball actually.
Oh, yeah. Right. You shake it.
And you shake it, but every single answer is it depends.
Okay.
It's the lawyer's edition.
Okay, perfect. Well.
Everything depends on the facts. And hindsight's always 20 20 to look back, but it's hard to predict, you know, going forward.
Okay. And I think, you know, and I think a lot of people are just really. Whoa. Maybe it's a viewer. I don't know. Maybe, do we actually have viewers? Is this working? They're calling, they're bombing us now. That's what's happening. It's like calling, okay, all right, put them through line two. No, that's fine. This is totally ad hoc and I think it's just fun to kind of role play like this. Nonetheless, I don't think of, I've never done nothing like this. I think this is legit. And, but for your end, I think this type of exposure is kind of cool. You know, you really put out some ideas that are totally in style, are totally in conversation now, that are hitting on a lot of cylinders for people and the real issues. But you, you, you got some of these other social issues, these other, okay, democratic social platform ideas that are kind of more controversial. What do you think? How, how do you differ from some of that? And how are you similar?
Well, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what type of social.
Well, I mean, it doesn't really matter as a commissioner role.
As a commissioner.
Yeah.
I'm glad that I don't have to sort them out. I mean, so where, where I stand personally, I mean, you know, it depends on what issue you're talking about, I suppose.
Okay.
But from my position as commissioner, I'm glad that I don't have to sort out those, how does the government get involved in that, you know? And a lot of times government regulation coming in, trying to do different things gets real messy. And so yeah, I'm glad I don't have to sort that out.
So you, in, in some respect, you're shielded from having to worry about those conversations. Because really you're just focused on a particular job description.
Yeah.
And.
I'm just trying to make Casiosco better for everybody.
Cool, man.
Make sure every voice gets heard. And I don't really have any big aspirations to tackle some of that bigger stuff. From back when I did work for the state GOP and did, you know, I kind of got in and saw how the sausage was made a little bit in the sausage factory. And I got out of that and that's when I became a lawyer. And now I'm kind of sticking my toe back in the water. I feel that on a local level, it's just much more about making our community better for everybody.
Okay.
And less about politics.
Well, don't be a meatball about it, man. But the idea is, I think, I think you could really add some flavor if that's the case. And I think most people just don't get the conversation. And we talked a lot about, I remember before when you and I discussed it, there's a lot of heritage that this community has with people that have served and families that have, you know, a little nepotism going on. But it's to the point where it's like, okay, let's get some new faces in there, new opinions, new backgrounds, some new experience because you're, you're qualified.
So I mean, and you asked about the qualifications before. I think what helps me to be qualified is my skills as a lawyer and my training as a lawyer. I know how to research things. I know how to get, you know, facts and find out the answers. And to, you know, be able to appreciate and gather all that and then synthesize it into, you know, ultimately moving forward. You know, basically being a commissioner, I could look at it as being a lawyer, but my client is all of Casiosco County.
Cool.
And you go and you advocate on behalf of them and do what's in their best interest.
Well, that's, that's pretty awesome, man. And I think, I think what we see in this particular climate is that we're, we're depending on local government to be successful. And, you know, we want our local community to at least be strong and to be fruitful. We want to be putting money into the bank and into the state and hopefully the state's, you know, getting better. And I think Indiana as a general is, is pretty cool. I've been here, it was 2007, kind of moved in, but that's, that's coming from Chicago, you know? So I have nothing. And you, you're from, you're not originally from Indiana, are you?
I'm originally from Indiana, not from Warsaw area. I'm 45 minutes up the road in a little town called Cherobosko.
Oh, okay.
In the country just south of Chana Lakes.
Okay.
You know, basically Green Center area, if anybody knows the Green Center area.
Okay. So yeah, actually, so you got real roots here. So you're not, you're not messing around.
Yeah. My wife's from here. She's a Wayne on the Lake native. And so we ended up deciding to settle here and we've got two kids at home. And we enjoy calling the Warsaw and Casiosco area our home.
Cool, man. Well, hey, Travis, thanks for your time, man. And I know that, I'm just wanting to get these asked questions out there. I think a lot of people are seeing issues that they care about and they're concerned about. But what's cool about it is the commissioner has a specific role.
Well, one thing that you mentioned a little bit ago, Linda.
Oh, go ahead, man.
Talking about government making things better, I mean, my view on that is the government facilitates things. And then our businesses and all of that, when it comes to economic development, is definitely working with, you know, it's our businesses that really make us a great place. I mean, there's a certain infrastructure the government, you know, does to facilitate that. And that's where we work. But I definitely am not, you know, subscribed to government, you know.
Oh, well, being heavy-handed.
Things better and being overly heavy-handed.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and yeah, we're going to really, and again, I think it's all opportunities. It's an opportunity zone.
Yeah.
And Casiosco County remains to be that.
And we're blessed. And we have, we're a small county of 80,000 people.
Yeah.
With literally a billion plus dollar industry.
Oh, yeah.
So, but that said, we have a billion dollar plus industry and close to half of our county is on free or reduced lunches. So there's definitely some room for improvement as well. We're already pretty great. We can make things better.
Okay, man. Well, hey, I'm with you. I'm with you, man. And I think we got some great opportunities and, you know, we're going to hear more from you. We might do this again. And you know what? It was really cool is I think since we're on Facebook Live, I don't want to necessarily take questions now. But we might follow up on saying, all right, let's cover what the questions were that really were kind of cool. And I don't know if you want to read them now or if it really matters, if we're getting trolled.
We recorded this.
Okay. So we're recording. Okay. Well, you're going to broadcast.
Just in case you said something silly like that.
Okay.
Clip it out.
Perfect. No, that's fine. No, I think that's hilarious because, yeah, we totally have to advertise and all the rest of that stuff. But no, I want you to have the opportunity, if you get comments, we'll, we'll cover that. I think you need to be able to air that to people who really other, have other questions than I do. And again, I was just asking because I was going to be a jerk about it. And uh, again, I was just asking because I was going to be, being a jerk about it. It's like, I'm going to make this guy work to get that yard, that lawn sign.
I like to work.
Well, good, man. Uh, that's what I like to know. And again, other people are going to want to see, is this guy legit? Is this guy going to be somebody that we can, can give the torch to for a while? And, and you don't have to do this forever.
Yeah, I'm not looking to be in there as long as some of the other people necessarily.
Get your kid in there.
One of the things that I think would be nice, but commissioners can't, you have to come from a state level, is term limits. We don't have term limits on a local level. I mean, some of the people have been in there twenty plus years. So.
Well, hey, man, thanks again.